First, I'll start to row call.
Johnson?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Travis?
Here.
Thies?
Here.
Yurten?
Here.
Kolela?
Avery?
Here.
And Sansonova?
Here.
Here. All right, at this point, if we went to stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. And we can start with Ms. Avery Kolela, if you want to start us on the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the appointment of Derek Patton as board member to fill the unexpired vacancy?
So moved.
Second. Well, it's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw. Row call.
Travis?
Yes.
Yurten?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thies?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, at this point, we're going to administer the oath of office. So, Mr. Patton, if you want to step over. Okay.
We have one.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, raise your right hand and we'll do this together. I?
I.
Your name?
Derek Patton.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the officer or member
of the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the Board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the Board while retaining the right to see changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education, as the case may be, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster with the Board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Lockport Township High School. I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students in our community school to advance the vision for Lockport Township High School. And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the Board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right.
And, you know, if you're a member of the public, you're tuning in, I think it's worthwhile just to look, we put as this, you know, part of this agenda item, Mr. Patton's biography, Marine Corps veteran, deployed in Iraq in 2003. His professional career has been in construction, industry committees that he's served on, people that he's represented, you know, his family. So just things that I think will, you know, really serve the Board well in the next four months that you're on the Board. So, you know, we're really glad that you are here.
Yeah, I'm excited. Thank you. Proud to be a member of the Board.
Thank you.
And before we move on, one other recognition, I just wanted to introduce board members and the public to Mr. Brian Omer. You know that Bill Thompson has been the Director of Facilities for Lockport Township High School District 205 for 27 years. That's a long legacy and a big office to move out. We were very fortunate that Brian applied for this position. He's a resident in our district. He currently is in High School District 113, which is Deerfield and Highland Park. Through another professional contact, through Lewis University, where I believe the first superintendent who hired you in District 113, Bruce Law, just happened to be on the phone with Bruce, couldn't say enough about Brian, his talents, his resume. I think what's important for you to know, as board members, for the public to know, you approved Brian actually on January 6th and didn't have an opportunity to meet him. But we go through an extensive series. There were four interviews that Brian was involved in, a screening interview, something very, very important to us that also includes students, a panel interview. Coming out of that panel interview, Brian was the number one choice of that panel, and we take that very seriously, people who would work with Brian. Then there was a walk-around interview with Bill Thompson, myself, and Stephanie Crowe from our mechanical rooms to our control systems, to our hallways, to our boilers, just as an opportunity for him to walk east campus here as a place to get an understanding of how he thinks about facilities. And finally, as a colleague, Bill Thompson did a visit to High School District 113 to see Brian's work. And we all felt very positive recommending him for this role. I think you're going to see him quite a bit at these board meetings as we are in a season. You know, what we're trying to do is fulfill what the Board directed us to do, all the way back on May 20th. You know, stay in line with the resolution that you passed, $26.2 million in life safety bonds, $10 to $12 million in fund balances, maybe more if the Board directs it so. And that's big work in our facilities. Brian's been a member since its inception, much like Derek Patton from the Word Go. The very first Facility Master Planning Council meeting, both of these gentlemen were there. So it's great, you know, to have them on board. I think they have skills and talents that we'll really use. Mr. Omer, anything on your mind? You know, you want to say to the Board?
I just want to say thank you. You know, went through the extensive interview process. It was actually a very positive process. And I can't wait to get started in July, so I'll be around if you have any questions for me. I'll be attending things, everything that I can. I'm also having a minute up, and I'll start July 1st and do as much as I can between now and then. So, thank you.
Congratulations both of you.
All right, moving on to our resolutions, which we don't have any. And then moving on to our board salutes. Well, I can start. All right, I'm sure of you received this little magazine, but I wanted to salute, first of all, our student board members here. On page, let's see, let me find it here. On page seven, there was a nice article by Lori Grant, okay? And it's all about the kids. And inside this article, there is a quote, all right, from our superintendent, Dr. Robert McBride, but there's also a quote, a few quotes, from our student board member, Michael Durkies. So it was really, you know, a positive article that I liked, showcased our high school and how we're doing with our student board members. And Michael did a very good quote here as far as, so, yes, but I'm sure I'll pass this on to him, you know, make sure that he gets it. So, all right, thank you. It's on my board salute.
Which magazine is that?
It's the Illinois School Board, the journal that we usually get every month, so, yes.
It was about, the article was about at the Triple I Conference, I think, I think, Lance, you were in that session.
That's it.
It was a session by Phil Boyd, day-long, on student board members and adult board members. And sort of in an impromptu way, the ISB folks said, "Let's have a student panel. How about the four Lockport students, you know, do an hour in this, you know, day-long session?" And, you know, you had rave reviews. I think so much so that that journal that comes out monthly for school board members across the state of Illinois spotlighted all four of you.
Yes. All right. That is it. That's all I have. Thank you.
I have one. I was, I attended the Teacher Institute Day for back to school, and so that was the breakfast before the staff and teachers went off to their different breakout groups. And I just want to say one thank you for the staff for letting me attend. They were very warm and welcome, and it was nice to see all the energy that everyone brought to the room. And then Dr. McBride had the assembly in the gym, and I thought he did a very nice job of kicking off the second semester. And it was nice to, you know, be part of all the recognitions for the teachers and get a sense of how things get started. So I thought it was a very nice event, and I hope the staff all had a very good day.
Thank you. All right.
Katie Kishler, she's not here. I keep looking around to see if she's here. I just want to thank the staff for their professionalism. I know we're going to talk about weather a little bit later, but their professionalism during the day that we probably had a lot of passion. But they did a really nice job and just making sure the kids came and they were doing what they were supposed to be doing when they were in the building.
I kind of wanted to echo on that because I, about administrator administrations, they had several things happen the last couple of weeks, how they stepped up and recognized what was going on and how they planned for it. And I'm talking about the weather. But, and, you know, there was no kids left out there waiting. Buses took their time, gave extra time for the kids to get there. So I just want to, you know, say, you guys did a great job in that part of that, you know, when that happened with the weather.
And I'd stay consistent with that, but switch the topic to the ACT test and be very thankful for teachers, administration, everybody who has dogged the ACT program to try and recoup some of the effort that went into hosting that thing, but not having it be as successful as we wanted it to be. And I know that that is a long, drawn-out process, especially when you don't have a very good responding partner on the other end. And so I'm hopeful that the resolution will be positive, but I want to recognize all the effort and work that went into doing the day, but also following up with all the challenges that came after it.
All right. Okay. Well, thank you.
I would like to salute Dr. McBride for spending all morning, I'm talking about the weather day, coordinating with our feeder districts. That's not a small task, you know, checking in with them, making sure that, you know, everything go all right. And the reason why we do that is because if a lot of parents have their older kids as babysitters when school's out. So if we were open and the feeder schools were closed, that would have a burden on the parents. But he did a yeoman's job of coordinating everything. So, thank you, Dr. McBride.
I wanted to salute Mrs. Adolf and all the foundation board members, especially Mrs. Sanford. I had the opportunity of being a model in the prom fashion show last week, and it was just such a lovely experience. I love the whole purpose behind it. Being someone that donated dresses, I just wanted to give other girls in the community a chance to feel like a million bucks like they should at the school dances. So I thought it was so lovely, put together, it was so professional, it was so well put together, so organized. And yeah, I was very impressed.
I just wanted to salute Mr. Dusterhoff. I got the opportunity to sit in on a meeting with Juniper with him, and it was just a great opportunity to learn. And it's just wonderful to see that we have staff here at Lockport that go above and beyond to give our students the opportunity, just as Mr. Dusterhoff has. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, moving on then to our report, student board member report.
So we have not had our superintendent advisory council meeting yet this month, so we don't have anything to report from there. So we thought for our report this board meeting, we would just kind of share some topics that are of student interest right now. First off, starting with the weather day. So we wanted to say before we start that this is by no means a reflection of Avery and I's opinion. We just felt that by being student representatives, it was important to bring to you guys how the students were feeling on that day. And obviously, we know that you can't please everyone, including the students, but I felt that there were two main groups of opinions that I kind of saw during the school day. And so the first were kids that were genuinely just not happy to be at school, did not want to be at school that day. And whether that was actually because of the colds and it being hard to start their cars in the morning or such, or just because they wanted to use the day as an excuse to stay home, I'm not sure. But there was that group. And then the second group that I saw were kids and students that were fine to come to school, did not mind bracing the cold weather, putting on a coat and hat, but rather were more so a little frustrated because attendance was lower in some of their classes. And so oftentimes, the day in the teacher's curriculum ends up kind of having to be scrapped for the day. It was more of just a chill day in their classes, I would say. That wasn't very productive. So then there was that group of students as well. And those were really the main two things that came out of the cold day that I saw for students. So nothing incredibly negative, but yes, those were the two things that I saw. And then next, we thought we would talk about the calendar.
All right, so I don't want to talk too much about the calendar right now because I want to ask a lot of questions during, when we go over it. But I do want to just bring up a couple of things for students. A lot of them, we want to get our students, like Eid, the day, like, off for them, just because it's a very, you know, it's a religious holiday for them and they, like, everyone has to take it off. We want to see, like, the percentage of students that actually are off that day and see if it's something that we could work out with our calendar. And then I just wanted to mention, in Mia's bio class, she was saying how bell schedule was a conversation, and a lot of the students wanted to get a zero hour just so that they could get gym out of the way and have more opportunity for classes. And this is just, it's continuously coming up in so many conversations is bell schedule. So, yeah.
Do you guys have any questions for us? Thank you.
No, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, ISB report.
In your packet of information, you should see a flyer from ISAB. It's back. As many of you may or may not know, we're a part of the Three Rivers Division, and they do have meetings on occasion, enrichment meetings for board members, where the next one for us is March the 4th at 5:30 at the Manhattan Junior High School. So if you're interested in going, see Kathy, she'll register you. It does include a dinner when you go. It's a meeting and a dinner. So the featured presentation is by Ladawn Armstrong from St. George's CCSD 256, 258. I apologize for my voice, but anyway, it's going.
Kathy will go ahead and register before this. This is your, much like our state organization, we're divided into regions. My state organization is also Three Rivers, kind of covers Grundy, a little bit of Kendall, wee bit of Kankakee, most of Will. Yours is Three Rivers as well. So these are all school board members from your division of ISB. You've met Natalie Williams, she's your kind of division head. And so this is just a gathering, walk you through what's going on, you know, from Illinois Association of School Boards perspective and kind of an update.
So it's not a topic-specific session? It is more of kind of a overview of activities that are happening?
It's a topic-specific. It is.
Yeah, they'll have an agenda of things that they'll, usually that they're going to brief you on.
Yeah.
Here are issues going on. There's a lot of networking that goes on as well. You know, people always ask me, "How can all these school board members get in the same room and not violate the Open Meetings Act?" Well, it's just impossible for any single board to transact business in that room, right? It's like the Triple I, but in Three Rivers.
They just haven't put the topic out.
Got it.
Has anyone attended?
Has anyone attended before?
Yes, we have. Yes, we have. Yeah, and these dinners are usually held at different places, you know, throughout, you know, in our area here. Okay.
They try to move them around so that everybody don't go to the same area, you know, because we have it at the Perry Bluff. We have had different meetings downtown, Joliet. So, but a lot of people like to go to schools, so that's why they're having this one at the junior high.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
You're welcome.
All right. Foundation report, you have it there for Ms. Adolf, unless you have any further questions or anything else you would like to ask Ms. Adolf?
The only thing that someone wanted to ask, I just wanted to highlight the fashion show. Very grateful for Mia to participate, and I mean, 21 girls that helped us with that. And all the dresses that were donated are free of charge to students that need it. So it was really great. I was going to share with you just one email from a parent that sent us just an inquiry about it, and her response was, like, just overwhelmed with gratitude. So really happy that we did it, looking forward to making it an annual event at the school for the community.
Great. All right. Thank you. All right. Legislative report, Dr. McBride.
Legislative report.
Yes.
Well, things are moving quickly. Just for those of you watching at home, tomorrow, the state legislator goes into its spring session, even though it's winter. That session usually lasts all the way till the 11th hour, somewhere around Memorial Day. Last year, actually, it adjourned in the wee-wee hours of Memorial Day last year, some interesting things. Couple of bills, when we published this agenda that I kind of just highlighted, the Halal Kosher food bill is up there. We are still, many of us, especially superintendents, are working on dual credit. We're in a little bit of an arm wrestle with our junior and community colleges across the state. We're kind of in a standoff on a number of different issues that we believe would be better for students. Issues like, you know, we believe that testing in all junior colleges to get to determine what classes you're going to get into. Some use the compass test, some use, you know, a test called Excel, Atlas, different kind of tests should be given at high schools. We're all certified to give AP test, SAT, ACT, but it's difficult for students who have to go to Juilliard Junior College to take that. We also have a number of, there's no other way to put it, disagreements about the qualifications of teachers. And oftentimes, there's a patchwork. And right now, different state, different community colleges and junior colleges in the state really decide what your qualifications are if you want to get Juilliard Junior College credit. So it can make it very, very difficult, and a number of other issues. So we're really trying to do legislative work to bring those barriers down. This doesn't impact us as much, polling places in schools, very hot topic. Many schools do not want to be polling places just because of the security risk of just, you know, processing so many people coming into the school. So many schools that are polling places close for the day. You see that every two years now, but, you know, we have a consolidated, we have a primary coming up, we have a consolidated election coming up. And just, you get nervous about that many members of the public coming in into the school. So very hot, hot, hot topic there. Some new things that I was briefed about that are coming up. Calendar, we'll have to, I will review the calendar tonight. But in 2026, when we have, every two years, we're required to take the election day off, there is actually a bill that would permit us to either have a teacher institute day, parent-teacher conferences, or a school improvement day on that day. Currently, public schools in Illinois cannot be open in any way, shape, or form. But there is a state senator who is pushing that bill. That probably won't be decided until Springfield. Everyone is saying that the state budget will be extremely tight in 2025, that the state legislator will have a very, very hard time. State, the governor's already made a commitment to evidence-based funding. We don't expect to see less funding. We don't really receive very much state funding, but how that might impact grants and other things, you know, remains to be seen. There is a full bill introduced to eliminate the world language requirement that is coming, to completely eliminate that. That's the two-year. But every single year since that requirement was put in place, there's been a bill to remove it, and it's been unsuccessful. It really seems, you know, calcified into school code. So just updating you on some briefings today. Want to spend a few minutes diving into, there's been a lot in the public. You have a lot of paper from me, and, you know, I want to kind of direct you to, and some of the things that I'm going to provide you, you know, I'm going to actually pass out, just so you're not, you know, totally overwhelmed by paper. And these are two executive, federal executive orders, right, that were issued last week. There's been a lot in the media about how these impact public schools. And I think it's really important for us as a board to discuss them. So I'm going to send around in a second, I've just got a few things here, a packet for you. But before I send it out and you're inundated with paper, I think it's really important to discuss the law. And right there today, you had in the oath that Mr. Patton took, the architecture of the law that governs you. So you take an oath to uphold the Constitution, right? So constitutional law is very important. There is a constitutional case that governs documented and undocumented students in schools. It's called Plyer versus Doe, 1982. That constitutional law, Supreme Court case law, guarantees the right of students, no matter what background they are, in a public school area, if they are school age, documented or not documented, to have access to public schools. And I always like to remind people, we're in the children business, not the adult business. Plyer versus Doe also guarantees that public schools, much like a lot of other things, will not inquire to immigration status. For example, I think it was Avery mentioned Eid. We don't know the exact percentage of our students who are Muslim because we never ask what your religion is. You know, constitutionally, we're prohibited from that. The next thing, and really important in constitutional law, is all public schools in Illinois are state constructions. The Constitution only through federal grants, and it's only grant money where the federal government has any kind of sort of regulatory authority. As a public school board, you report directly to the state of Illinois and really no other entity. So state school code, state policy is, you know, preeminent in the work that you do. And that's grounded into your board policies. So the policies, some of them I'll mention, that govern in here are all aligned to state school code. So that kind of lineage, I think it's really important to understand, you're a public school in the state of Illinois, which is a different architecture maybe than in North Carolina or Arizona, or Florida. Florida has all county schools, and the superintendent is elected, not hired by the board. Totally different structure, perfectly acceptable in the United States because Florida decided as a state, that's how they would construct, you know, their, their school districts. Any questions about that? Constitutional law, state law, and then it's expressed in board policy. And I always try to, with members of the public, mention that your board policies are not things that you just sat down and said, well, this sounds good. They come to you through the state legislator and a service that you use, and really every school district in the state of Illinois uses it, to translate state school code into real law. Any questions about that lineage? So I want to pass out just a resource packet for you. I didn't include it so you were not getting barraged with papers. Kathy helped me out with this, it's paper clipped. I hope you have enough copies for Mia and Avery. I'm kind of counting right now, and I hope you don't run out. I'm not expecting you to go over all of these, but I think probably the most important one is right on top. And this is from the Illinois State Board of Education, this is your guidance. So you have two executive orders that were signed last week, protecting the American people against invasion and defending women and gender, from gender ideology extremism and restoring biological truth to the federal government. So let's work with the first. What did the first do relative to schools, and what does that mean here? Well, what the first did is, in the past, in terms of immigration enforcement, churches, schools, and hospitals, and college campuses have been given special exemption from immigration enforcement. Really, what the executive order does is removes that, okay, from a special consideration in terms of law enforcement, okay? What does that mean? Well, it's really important for us, unlike churches or hospitals, to remember that we work with children. And I emphasize that because law enforcement for adults, if you're over 18, all bets are off. Law enforcement can come to your home, to a school, to a basketball game, you know, the totally different, you know, if you're breaking the law, there's a warrant for your arrest. Anywhere in the public, law enforcement, if you're an adult, can enforce that. But for students who are under 18, you actually already have, in the state of Illinois, law and policy that sort of speaks to this. And I just want to, you know, take pauses if there's a question. You really actually have everything in policy and law that you need to really handle any law enforcement agency that might come to school seeking access to a student. I want to break that down, you know, unless there's questions and I've lost you. So the most important is 7:150, and 7:150 should be at the back of your packet, I believe. I can put it up. I also included search and seizure. So in the state of Illinois, any law enforcement agency that comes to a school and seeks access to a student needs either a court order or parent permission. It's called agency interview. In my career, I've dealt with alcohol, firearms, and tobacco. I've dealt with Secret Service, the FBI. Last week, we had an inquiry from the FBI for student records. In the fall, we dealt with the Illinois State Police. And really, for all of those agencies, it's the same answer, even the Lockport Police. If the student is under the age of 18, to make it simple, either a court order is required to have access to that student or parent permission, parent consent. The parent also has a right to be present in any kind of interview. That's not situations where there's a clear and present danger. We believe the student, we have credible reasons to believe that student has a weapon on campus, right? And obviously, law enforcement has to prove that they have a real reason for us to allow that kind of access, right? So really, that's grounded in state school code, and that really hasn't changed since 2020. Actually, it was right up in here where this law was dramatically changed due to some events that took place in Naperville. Well, I was a principal in Naperville, not at my school. Any questions about that? So in short, if any law enforcement agency comes, Lockport Police, Will County Sheriff, FBI, Immigration and Customs, Border Patrol, Secret Service, CIA, maybe not the CIA, I don't know, they probably wouldn't come right to the front door. We first have to follow that board policy. And it's sometimes surprising when we tell law enforcement that. Then records. We have a federal law called FERPA, Federal Educational Rights Privacy Act, combined with the Illinois School Records Act, which only parent permission can allow the release of student person records. Grades, address, phone numbers. That's why we also have a law called SOPA that protects all that information online as well. So in essence, really what the law states is law enforcement agencies of any kind have many, many hurdles before they can access children. And we've heard a lot about schools. I think that is a lightning rod for families and for people because, you know, schools are, you know, a particular kind of place. But those are the kind of things, you know, we will be instructing our staff on how to obey the law. And particularly Illinois state law that directly regulates and governs us, and we would never want to fall afoul of. Can I answer any questions about that?
There were parents who happened to come to the school because of some agency coming, trying to get their child. Would they be protected?
So if an agency sought access and the parent wanted to be, first off, the parent has to grant permission, and the parent wants to be present. Now, that choice by the parent, if that parent is indeed maybe subject to arrest, that parent could be arrested. If that parent chose and wants to be with their child, you know, that for adults, you know, anyone 18 or over, law enforcement is very, very different. It doesn't, it doesn't, you know, in public society, someone with a proper warrant can come into our homes and arrest us, you know, by law. For adults, very, very different than what takes place in the school.
But they can't take the child?
They cannot.
Not saying that it could happen, but what if the parents choose not to come? What takes place?
Well, if the parents choose not to come, but over the phone don't give us permission to have the agency, and it's not a clear and present danger kind of thing. Probably the first thing we would do is make a phone call to our legal counsel. Say, we have a situation, we have a law enforcement agency that would like to have access to a student, to question a student. The parent over the phone has denied permission. What would you recommend? You know? State school code, your board policy says that that law enforcement agency, unless they produce a court order signed by a judge, cannot access the student. So they have to have that proper paperwork. I surprised an FBI agent last week who said, well, I can turn over these school records on this student if you produce a court order. And the FBI agent was very surprised, and first a little irritated, but then I explained exactly what I'm explaining to you. And if you're doing a proper investigation, you want to do it properly too, right? You want to obtain evidence or access to a student in a proper way, so down the line, you don't have a lawyer say you didn't obtain this evidence properly. So it's worthwhile for law enforcement to do that as well.
Buses and events?
Yeah, buses, school, you know, with wheels, so.
What if a student is being dropped off?
If they're on school property, then they're what's called in loco parentis, so in control.
I think you answered this, but in this guidance, it talks about the school district's discretion to comply. So I think what you're saying is that essentially is involving legal counsel.
Right. And some of these stickier places, right, like, where are we discretion coming into effect? You know, if you have law enforcement says there's a clear danger, then I would, you know, we would have to use our discretion, you know, to say, well, this sounds like the police have produced, or the law enforcement agency has produced evidence that shows there's a clear danger, there's a reason to believe, you know, that this, there's something dangerous, that's exercising discretion. Or attorney exercising discretion, right? Or safety of the child, right? There is only one evident, I do want to share this, there is only one agency that can have any access it wants to any child. And that's DCFS, can at any time come to our school, say, I need to speak to that child. And, you know, that's the only agency in the state of Illinois that can have direct access without parent permission to the child. That's, you know, abuse in neglect, right? So I think, you know, our, you know, we're doing, we're going to do what we do, you know, is educate everybody on what the law is so that people who are working with students, deans, school counselors, psychologists, social workers, administrators, school resource officers have an understanding of what the law is so that we can appropriately interact with any kind of enforcement agency. Okay, if we talk about the second one, maybe not as long. Defending women from gender ideology extremism. And I, and sorry, before I leave this, I really, you know, shared, these are working documents. This document, I think, is very, very helpful as kind of a playbook of some work we're doing. But just, I shared a lot of background information for you too, that I think is really good reading for board members. I think is really good reading for board members. The second one, defending women from gender ideology extremism and restoring biological truth to the federal government, it primarily focuses on documentation at the federal level, visas, passports, that contain any kind of LGBTQ plus distinction. Obviously, we don't issue those kind of documents. But it creates somewhat of a tangle at your level with Title IX because it upholds the, recently, there was an injunction in a federal court removing the Title IX 2024 regulations, ruling them unconstitutional. It also seems to point to a change in the 2020 regulations. So where that is an issue for us, we have the whole next packet of school policy, press one seventeen is all lining board policy up to, it came out before these decisions, and it's lining board policy up with the 2024 guidelines. So we just received last week from press, whoa, 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 hey, wait a second. So to, you know, we're just going to have to hit a pause so that you're not doing a lot of doing and undoing if that's not confusing enough. Did that make sense? Any questions on these? You know, I always say, I think the end of the day is really, you know, Illinois state law is key. Your board policies, you know, FERPA, Illinois School Records Act, registrars, we follow those laws. And I think that's really the important thing to keep in mind.
All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, and there was no public comment follow-up from December 16, 2024. Moving on to public comments. At each regular open meeting, members of the public and district employees may address the school board during the public comments section of the agenda. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to respectfully follow the guidelines of policy, policy two colon two three oh and policy eight colon three oh available upon sign-in. Public comments are important to the board. However, it is customary not to respond on issues until time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of action or response at the time of comment does not imply lack of interest in the issues brought to the board. And at this point, there is none. Okay, moving on to communications. I know it's listed here as none, but I did wanted to let the board know that usually HR, I usually get all the emails, and I usually get an email from an HR office, you know, just letting know if someone had the birth of a child or the passing of someone, you know. And usually, I get those emails, and I usually send, you know, a sympathy and, you know, email back to those people or that person, individual, you know, giving our sympathies on behalf of the board. So, and I always CC Bob to those sympathies, but I got a response back, and most of the time, they do respond back saying, you know, thank you so much for your kind words or anything on that. But this time, I got an email from Brett Berkman and Scott Berkman, they're brothers, and they had the passing of their sister. But they wanted to reach out, they sent me an email, you know, thanking, you know, so much for your kind words, and they all, and the passing of their sister, Robin. But they also wanted to let you guys know, to thank you for, you know, for their sympathies on that too. So, all right, that is it. Thank you. All right, and there you have on your board packet Freedom of Information request, you had three of them.
And just really quickly, Board Member Tease asked this question. What's with the copier forers, right? And I'm sure Brian might laugh about that, and Stephanie might. It's a very typical commercial request where people who might want to make a bid on our copiers might be bidding on other school copiers as a way that they get information of kind of what are going rates, what are other people doing, so that they can try to be competitive.
Thank you. Moving on to approval items. Do I have a motion to approve the open session minutes from the December 16, 2024 board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Tease. Are there any questions to any of that meetings? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Tease?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Patton?
Upstein.
Travis?
Yes.
Yarston?
Yes.
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes from the December 16, 2024 board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Tease and second by Dr. Shaw. All right, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Tease? Yes.
Patton?
Upstein.
Johnson?
Yes.
Yarston?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Yes. And the next one, I will combine the school board meeting minutes and the closed session meeting minutes from January 6, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve the open session meeting minutes from the January 6, 2025 special board meeting and the closed session meeting minutes from the January 6, 2025 special board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Tease and second by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Yarston?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Patton?
Upstein.
Tease?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva.
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the January 2025 board expenses?
So moved.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Tease and second by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions? All right, roll call.
Patton?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Tease?
Yes.
Yarston?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Yes. All right, moving on to our treasurer's report.
Good evening, board. Okay, we are at the halfway point. Our treasurer's report is the halfway point of the fiscal year. So when you take a look at the financial reports, you'll see that. You will see, Dr. McBride, will you navigate to bills payables, what we're going to be paying? So those are all the bills that we'll be sending out tomorrow, assuming the board approves them. So that's a full list of all of the direct deposits and the checks that will be going out, as well as charges on the P cards for the last month. And then, these are our financial reports. So statement of position shows the balances as of December 31st, again, the halfway point of the year. And you'll see that, as we talked previously about the days cash on hand, you will see that we are within that six to 12, getting closer to a six to nine month kind of balance, right? If you look to the far right corner on the bottom, if Dr. McBride scrolls just a bit, yep, you will see that, the 10 months for total. And the balancing out of the operating funds between operations and maintenance, the bulk of our expenses have been in operations and maintenance, which is why that's a little bit lower, but it averages out for operating at 10 months, so. Could you scroll, please? Thank you. So then our revenue and expenditure reports for the month, we have, again, this is the halfway point, so, you know, grand total, we've received approximately 50% of the revenue we're going to receive this year, right? Fall tax collections are in at that point. You'll see there are some funds, like the Capital Projects Fund, that is skewed there. And the purpose of, the reason that that is, is because the Capital Projects Fund is solely almost, well, it's almost solely funded, it's primarily funded by the transfers from operations and maintenance. So it's kind of not, you know, representative of the rest of the sources. Operations and maintenance is that way as well, and that has more to do with which bond or which tax levy the funding came from, the split between the operating funds. So it really is most useful to look at the bottom line, that we've received 50%, regardless of the allocation among the funds. Now, if you look at the spending, the spending is a little bit different than that. The spending is more than 50% if you look at the expenditures, and that is because of capital project things, right? So capital projects happen at the beginning of the year, and so those, those things do show more than 50% then, and it takes the total above. The rest is cash on hand. You'll see our cash balances by fund, and then you'll also see our listing of investments. And I know Dr. McBride and I have talked before about how the money is collected twice a year and invested out. So fall collections are complete, and they are invested so that if you look at the list of, you know, maturity dates, you'll see every month, there's more maturing so that we can pay bills.
And if you just pause in this report strategically for you as board members, certainly, you know, in a little bit, we'll talk about life safety bonds. But when you look at fund balances, this is, you know, you know, what is in cash in your fund balances and what is assigned to investments? You know, we're constantly, we receive income, we invest it as we get that income, because we're only paid, you know, if you think about it this way, twice a year, we've got to make the people's money work to pay bills. You know, today, when we pay bills, oftentimes, it's off of a matured investment that we're sort of time releasing, you know, as we go along to make the most out of that money. So just, you know, the difference between when you see a fund balance, what is liquid cash and what is already assigned in an investment?
Yep, that is exactly. So following this summary of that is the detailed listing of the investments and the list of maturity dates as pieces get rolled out. And we do in my office a cash flow that shows how much money we need every two weeks for payroll and approximately how much money we need every month to pay all of the bills that the board will be approving this month. Finally, you'll see the cash flow graph, which shows the buildup of cash when we get the tax receipts in September, and then we start spending it down again, and we'll keep spending that down until we start getting collections in May for the new tax levy that the board approved in December. The final report in here is our athletic trust, well, not the final report, almost final report, athletic trust and student activity account detail, so that's all of our clubs and sports activities and their balances, and then the real estate tax report that shows the collections that are still outstanding, the, there's $244,000 that we haven't collected on the 2023 taxes at this point. Our collection rate is usually this 99.6, 99.7, so it's pretty good. This report will remain the same until we start getting collected collections in May. So probably not, this particular page probably won't change over the next few months. Sometimes a little bit of collections trickles in, but not much.
And that high collection rate is because in our community, you know, so many people have a mortgage, and they have the real estate taxes paid through whoever that mortgage is with, so that bank has to pay that. So that has a great deal to do with that, you know, that how many, how people have set up their debt, their mortgage and their payment.
Dr. McBride, will you go back to the recommendation in the agenda?
You bet.
So the rest of the reports are pretty much standard. One thing you'll see, the bond payments, it's a little blue word there. Twice a year, we make our bond payments, so December, they're due January 1st. So the end of December, we made the most recent bond payment, so this is just the item showing that we've paid those. And just to remind the board that those were, those did come out of operating funds, there were transfers from the Ed Fund to pay for that.
It's part of your payment.
Correct.
So in essence, rather than passing this cost on into the levy, you know, that would impact your tax rate, would impact taxpayers, you chose, one way to think about it is using fund balances to make your debt payment rather than having taxpayers make that debt payment for you, so.
Is that the other financial uses?
Yeah, that's transfers. Transfers are listed as other financing sources and uses. To the fund that gets the money, it's a source. To the fund that sends the money, it's a use. Yeah, absolutely. Because it's not really revenue, right? Other things that would show in other financing sources and uses is when we do issue life safety bonds, that money coming in is in that other financing, other sources category as well. It's because it's a, almost like an extraordinary, right, revenue source, it's not your operating, your normal revenue sources. So if you were to think of like a business's operating statement, you've got their revenues and expenses in the course of business, and then anything that's like outside, we've sold some big, you know, factory or something, something that's extraordinary or unusual or not often, usually goes in that other sources or uses as well. So when you sell bonds and take that revenue in, that'll show up in other sources as well, just FYI. The interfund transfers here, the central ceiling repairs project is complete. This is the last time you'll see that on here. And then, as we are starting to get ready to work in the summer on additional central projects, you will, I will be putting more information on that, whatever the new project is going to finally look like, you'll start seeing interfund transfers and costs related to that in this section. The five-year financial forecast will be part of this treasurer's report next month. I'm going to update that over the next 20 or 30 days, and you'll see that next month. We'll probably talk about it at the next finance committee meeting as well. And their enrollment projection is the same that you've seen previously. And then there's some upcoming things that'll be for approval in future months. Any questions on any of that?
Just on a side note, I, you know, did look over here, your audit, the annual financial report, I did look at that, okay?
Most people read it over with your brain.
But yes, we got a clean opinion from our auditors, and I just wanted to congratulate you and your staff, because this is, we'll be possibly getting the financial recognition for the 18th year in a row, so which is the top recognition. So congratulations, Stephanie, to you and your staff and to everyone, because that just shows, I mean, especially with all these reports and everything, how we are very conservative with our taxpayers' monies.
And really, that's a very significant document because more than just great job, we're financially sound, no findings in there at all, it's more important for the public to know that we're audited annually, two, that Stephanie and her staff do an incredible job if you look through how many transactions they had to keep track of. But most importantly, that status, as you go into possibly doing life safety bonds, that document is highly assistive to the rate that you will get. That document is basically your credit check, whether or not, you know, you're going to receive a more favorable rate on bonds or a less favorable rate, which is a direct, you know, savings to taxpayers. So it's very, just very important. I'm glad you brought it up, Mrs. Lopez Caniva.
Thanks, Stephanie.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the December 2024 treasurer's report?
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Tease and second by Dr. Shaw. Roll call.
Travis?
Yes.
Yarston?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Tease? Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Yes. All right, moving on to our superintendent report.
All right, lots to talk about. Before we do, and I can tell Mia and Avery are ready to talk about weather, I'm so excited, especially because if you're a weather wonk like I am, February, not looking so great, my friends, so there's a lot of bad forecasts for February. Before we do that, just a couple things I want to point out. Next week, I belong to two superintendent groups, ERDI and District Management Group. And District Management Group is the organization that helped us with our strategic plan that's ending this year in many ways. They have a direct conflict next week, I can't be in two places at one time, and District Management Group either supports, and this is Harvard Business School runs District Management Group, either the superintendent goes and is paid for by District Management Group or a board member. And Dr. Shaw is representing us, she is going, and Dr. Christophero and Dr. Huntington will be there as well. You know, we're already doing academic, we finished our training on academic return on investment, which we're hoping to use as really the platform for our strategic planning. I'm just looking forward to hearing what you learn next week and what this gentleman, John Kim, he uses the Harvard case study method, and you'll have a case study, very interesting method. This is across all graduate schools, graduate schools at Harvard teach using case studies. So you get these really hard case studies that you have to disentangle in all of the graduate schools, so very interesting, enjoy. I want to point out, we have a gentleman in the audience, Aleem, Aleem Usaini. Aleem has been invited by the Illinois State Board of Education to attend their March 13th Student Summit, but he cannot go unless I go. It's very interesting. So I filled out our form today, Aleem, and made our reservation, so we will be heading down, I think it's in Bloomington, so not quite Springfield, right?
Um, you all have a brand-new, coming-to-order, third edition, super exciting, right? Like, this is everything you need to know, really, this is the, huh, you know, what? The legal piece of running a board meeting, being a board, being voting, so we all want to make sure that you have that brand spanking new third edition, right when it came out. You can impress all of your friends, uh, that you got yours, um, first. Uh, and then also, I wanted to join that, you know, what, what, um, uh, Mrs. Lopez Canema said. We have, we have had an unusual amount of staff members who've had loss. Um, I would have been in a wake this evening for a mother-in-law of one of our staff members, except we had a, we had a board meeting, right? I just couldn't get to Oklahoma and back in time for our board meeting, but, you know, one, so you know, I'm almost a hundred percent of the time, whenever we have a loss. Uh, you know, unless it's out of state, you know, or too far away, uh, I go to the wake and represent the board, I think that's really important. But we've just had, I, I've been doing about two or three a week since the new year. And that's just really tough on human beings, you know, when, when, when they have loss. Also, we have an unusual amount of illness, I've noticed a few board members have, uh, Kleenex, I'm sorry. Uh, but we've just, illness has been really, really tough in, in the past few weeks. And, and I want to shout out our bus drivers, uh, you as a board, you have the bus drivers in the land. And I'm not going to go out on a limb to say, I think, for the most well-adjusted, maybe have the most healthy perspective. On teenage students of anyone in the district, uh, they show up, um, your mechanics are superb. And the effort they put in, you know, to really make sure, you know, a lot of times when you hear that other districts, and we'll get into this now, aren't opening. It's because their buses aren't ru- aren't, aren't running, in those kind of weather, we have diesel that sludges. And they're not putting in the kind of time that, that your mechanics and bus drivers are. It was kind of funny through that whole thing, two of our mechanics had birthdays while they were doing all that three AM work and, you know, um. You know, to make sure things were up and running, so, uh, just, just really ama- amazing, amazing people there, so let's, let's jump into it. So here's where I could use a, a, a little bit of guidance, I think I, I could use some direction from the board, there's, there's two issues I'd like to, to raise with the board. First is decision-making, I want to walk through the decision-making, you know, and check with, especially with the students, you know, uh, decision-making. And then two, uh, one, I just initiate a conversation about the, the dramatic change in online social media platforms. Um, and one of the things I want to set the context for you, that, um. All across the region, you know, let's deal with the schools that were open, um, Lincoln Way, Manuka, Lamont High School. Um, all chose to be in person, uh, we chose to be in person, our feeder districts were very intent about that. Every school of any kind in DuPage County was in session, and talking to all those superintendents, we had the same. Kind of, really, there's no other way for me to put it, negative experience. Um, I would also say that attendance in schools that I've talked to that were in e-learning. Uh, and Dr. Shaw, I haven't talked to Dr. Nolting, but was similarly bad. So I've talked to a lot of superintendents who took attendance, their rates were about sixty to seventy-five percent. They were, they were about where in-person was, right, and that, that is usually the case with e-learning, a lot of people just, just stopped out, right? Um, I would say overall, I just believe our mission is to keep schools open. Um, you know, and if you feel differently, you know, obviously, in situations, s- children should be safe and they should be able to learn. But as a general proposition, we should keep school open. School is not just school for a lot of kids, for some kids, it's where they're going to get two meals. For some kids, it's where they're going to have supervision. Um, so it's not just school for, for some of our students, and I just think that's so important to remember. Um, so I want to review first the decision-making process and just get your feedback, first and foremost. I could use some feedback from you about how you feel about our feeder districts. Uh, one role in this role that, you know, nobody appointed me, but it's just always kind of been that way. In our associated areas, that I'm the person who calls together, the early morning call, the late afternoon call, the all-day on Martin Luther King, um, uh, conversations. All the superintendents together to say, what are we doing? And our feeder schools felt very, very strongly that they should be in person, and I'm empathetic towards them. Because six a- and a half hours with a second grader online is, is, is tricky, right? So I guess, you know, that's really where I start, is that collaboration. And I will tell you, that's the biggest amount of criticism that I personally received. I received a lot of people directly who said, forget about those other districts, make your own decision, both on our own staff and, uh, um. You know, uh, parents or, or other people, and I guess I could use some board direction on that, because at least right now, that's where I start. And just, I am assuming that the board would, would like me to be in alignment with our feeder districts. But if that is not what you feel, um, you know, or if you think we should go a different way, or be unique, or, you know, I could just use some feedback.
I think it's, uh, critical that we're in alignment with our districts. I think Board Member Johnson's comment about many of our families have high schoolers that watch their grade schoolers. In the house while the parent goes to work is a real situation, and I would say the same for just simply having. High schoolers and grade schoolers all in the same family, and so if one school goes to school and the other one doesn't. It creates a lot of confusion for families about how they're going to navigate drop-offs, arrivals, pickups. All of those different types of things and what times those occur. This is one of those situations where it is very difficult to satisfy everybody.
Right.
Um, and if the attendance metrics are similar between online and in-person. I think one of the discoveries that we have coming out of COVID is that in-person is a better. Learning experience for students than online. You know, and you'll probably get to this, probably my, my only thought on this process is. If there is a different temperature under which we evaluate the open or close. I'd certainly be open to best practice or additional research about what that temperature could or should be. I'm sure that it was established for very sound reasons, based on very sound research, um, but that would be something that I'd. Number one, be interested in hearing about, and then number two, evaluate whether or not there is a change necessary for that. And I would assume, consistent with the first comment, is that our grade school districts would adopt a similar temperature as, as we would.
Right.
Um, just to make it consistent across the board, but, you know, with our grade schools. We do have a number of students that certainly walk, um, to east and central. Um, but we also have grade school districts that have the same issue, and if the grade schoolers, you know, given that they're smaller kids and younger kids. Feel comfortable having in-person, then certainly, um, bigger kids with more stuff and all that kind of thing. Should also feel comfortable with that too, but I, I would absolutely be open to understanding more about the temperature aspect.
Yeah, and we certainly, I just went to our website, and just for anybody who didn't catch it, we have, um. Uh, emergency closing, it's just a little, little snowflake here. And what we use, and, and this is generally used, um, you know, area-wide, this is, you know, not a matrix that we made up. Right here in the, the lower right-hand corner, we use something from the National Weather Service, a guideline they give of unsafe to be outside. And that's the mix of minus ten degrees standing and minus twenty-five degrees or below wind chill. Um, as you can imagine, you know, folks like me, we're, you know, up around here, up at like three AM, up around here at the bus, at the transport center, you know, five AM. Um, you know, at about five fifteen AM, when we would have made any kind of, I always try to go, if we're going to change direction before five thirty AM. We were at minus five degrees below zero, standing, minus seventeen was being clocked in at Joliet. Um, you know, in terms of wind chill. Uh, so, you know, it's, and, and I'm absolutely, you know, if the board, if board members feel like we, we want to change this, these metrics. They're generally used area-wide, just because, you know, this is deemed unsafe to be outside at all. And so it's difficult, you know, how close, how far, right? Um, there's probably a modicum of discretion in, involved there. Um, you know, so it's a mix, as you know, kind of put in my report, the mix of feeder schools. These temperature controls, but then the readiness of the institution, you know, are our buses running, we had every single bus running. Uh, we only had one bus that was a, a little bit sluggish, I alerted board members, and strangely enough. Uh, our lowest performance were some of our newest buses, and we're looking into that from the folks that we purchased them from. We did have one bus was having a hard time accelerating, it was a local route right here, it was having a hard time accelerating as it passed the transport center. We just pulled it in and just got, had kids get on another bus and away it went. Um, there were people online saying things like we had buses stranded on the bridge, that's not true. There were people online saying that kids didn't get picked up by the bus, we didn't get a single complaint. Um, and then also our buildings, you know, Bill Thompson and his staff did a great job checking the building, making sure the building was, was ready. And then our staff, do we have any kind of unusual attendance where our staff can't come in and all those systems were operating? So I try to take it as a matrix of three data points, our feeder districts, the actual weather, and then our operational capacity. To, to open up school and, and run it. Um, you know, and any of, any of those can be revised really for, for any reason. Um, you know, it is hard to please people, isn't it, right, you know? Um, but, but I might say, our job is to have school open, uh, that's our job, in a safe way. But we have other people involved in also having kids at school, right? Um. So, uh, you know, we, every single day, we rely on families to have their children here. Um, and so it, 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 it's a two-way street, absolutely, I, and I don't know if there's any of those decision-making that, that you would change or alter.
No, first of all, I really appreciate, I think, you know, you, you sent us all those text messages, we were always in conversations over the weekend. And then on Monday was like boom, 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 and we were getting all these texts all the time, but I appreciate that also. And I know that, you know, the areas, you know, feeder school superintendents were also in communication with you, but I'm, and, you know, and of course. You get feedback from some parents and stuff like that, but most of the parents that I talked to, they were very appreciative that, yes, that we were open for school. Because a lot of these parents, they go to school, they go to work, they said, I know what my daughter, my son would have done, they would have been just slept in, not even gone to e-learning.
And, and I do, I would be remiss, I, I did do a very quick survey, just wanted to know what our staff thought after the experience today. Overwhelmingly would have preferred to e-learn. Um, but their main reason that they cited was attendance, they thought perhaps they would have had better attendance. Obviously, we can't say what our attendance would or would not have been, since we didn't have it. But I know, talking to area schools that went to e-learning, their attendance wasn't any better than ours in-person. So I think we still would have had the same, same headwinds, potentially, you guys know more about e-learning than, I've never e-learned in my life, you know? Yeah, I think, Mr. Patton, you had something you wanted to say, I cut you off.
Uh, just a couple of quick things, one, uh, you made me think of another one with e-learning, but. Um, first, the first place I went, I have four kids ushering them off to school, I heard some complaints, but they survived and they came home and. For the most part, I'm glad they went, um. The, uh. The first place I went, when all this started blowing up, was if, was policy, was our policy, so I think it was important that you fell back on that. And we have that available on the website, and everybody can look at it, so we're not debating it in the heat of the moment. Um. The, I, I've seen some other districts that I'm aware of that have a late start option.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, is that something that has ever been, I, I don't know if my kids have ever had that.
Uh, we, we certainly could do that, we could have on Tuesday ran a late start, um, Wednesday run a late start a- as well, you know? Temperature didn't change that much, but it might have given people a little bit of time to adjust, um, we have that late start, everybody knows what that means. So that could be a nice modification, just say, hey, you know what, let's use that, did you, in District two thirty, Dr. Shaw? Because Dr. Nolting, one conversation I had with him is he was thinking of using a, a late start in your district, did, did you? But you, when he was thinking of going in-person.
Yeah, so I.
Did you do that online at all, or?
No, but to my knowledge, um, the discussions were, we were in-person, but then once our feeder district decided that they were going to be online, we went online.
Yeah, and about six o'clock, Dr. Nolting called me and told me.
So that's a card you have.
It, it is, it's certainly something you could use, the sun gets up a little bit, usually on those cold days, it's a clear day, so it's a really good recommendation.
That was a valid comment.
Yeah.
Um, I just want to say, I appreciate that there's process that's established already in advance, and so that there's, you, um. There's a, a logical and, and method way of thinking and moving through the decisions, I mean, it's a difficult decision and. Um, and so you, you have the ability to, um, uh, reach out to your counterparts and others. To help receive counsel on, in guidance, uh, and how to structure your, your reaction. Or decision to weather, um, adjustments, and so I think that's very helpful, that it's already laid out, it's tried and true. It's something that works, um, and, uh, I think, uh, having that, um, goes a long way, so thank you.
Yeah, and I would just report to the board, to all board members, you know, we, we had no known reports, walkers or, um, students to the bus. With hypothermia, with frostbite, um, I was on a bus ramp for thirty-five continuous minutes from seven o'clock to seven thirty-five. I was cold, but I don't think I was in danger, and I just had all my best gear, you know, that, that, that I could muster, um. You know, and, and I, I also think, you know, one of the things that weighs in my mind is when we ask employees to put in their muscle to get school open. And they've been spending maintenance people, bus mechanics, as much time as they spent on Monday and Tuesday, getting the system ready. To, to kind of swerve away, hey, we're ready, we're ready to go, everything's in great shape, i- it, it's sometimes hard to swerve away from that, that as well. Anything on your mind, did that help at all for you guys to understand? And I perfectly understand, you know, students, the, the complaint I got at the bus stop was, people were mad they had to wear their coat to school. But you know, that, hey, you know, I get it, it, you know, one person's big problem is another person's no big deal, right, so.
Yeah, young people don't wear coats, they come with a hoodie at the rooms.
I mean, I think it's a fashion statement, I appreciate a good coat. But one question that I did have is, do we have any extra resources put in place for students that are walkers to school? That possibly would be harder for them to get to school by walking?
Yeah, well, you know, the extra resource is, you could always catch a ride if a parent's able to do that. We don't have, Mia, very many students who are further than about a ten or fifteen-minute walk, you know, just the halo that we have, right? And that's not to say that that's not a cold ten or fifteen-minute walk, right? But you do, in that kind of weather, get worried about twenty to twenty-five minutes, you know, that kind of exposure can be pretty long, right? And if you're moving, you got a better chance to be staying warmer, right? And you got to bundle up, you know, it's just one of those kind of things, you know?
I guess going off of Mia's question, is there anything that we do, like, does the building open up any earlier if a parent needs to drop?
Really good, uh, question, we, we had the building, the minute any student showed up at any time, we had personnel get them in the building.
So if a parent needs to leave for work, so for example, I have to go to work at my school, I have to be there at a specific time, and that would typically be earlier than when my student would be walking to school.
All of that open.
Okay.
So no keeping students out.
And I think that the good point that you made is, um, you know, the districts I can speak on, Lockport, Homer, Lincoln Way, being associated with those districts. They have control over their busing, whereas a school district like two thirty that did go to e-learning does not, so they outsource their busing.
Right, and it was very typical feature, you know, and, and certainly as superintendent, I'm not going to point, I'm, it's not my job to talk about other districts. Or when I'm hearing from colleagues saying, listen, we contract our buses and they're having huge problems, that's not my job to advertise that, right? Um, but that is a common phenomenon. Um, one of the reasons why many of the schools, especially at the high school level in DuPage, felt adamantly, when I was on their five AM call. Um, to, to be in session as a county, because so many of them contract and were worried, um, you know. Uh, to a certain extent, you know, about if they didn't get their buses rolling and buses going, you know, what the consequences be, so. Uh, one last thing, I don't, you know, I just want to put this in the minds of the community and the board, I just, you know. Um, we learned the hard way last week what the new world is when X, Instagram and Facebook have no more controls. Um, I don't think I could, with a straight face, show you the comments, you can do that yourself. Um, I just think we all have to ask, first and foremost, I, I wonder to myself. Is it the expectation of adults that school hallways are a place where people use respectful language? Treat students, adults, when, when you walk into a school, is it your reasonable expectation that this is a place where there's a, there's order? That it isn't anything goes? And certainly, I know for a fact, if suddenly tomorrow, all of the adults in the building began yelling, swearing, cursing. Using profanity, sexuality, racism, that our students, it wouldn't be long until our students would do the same thing. So the question I have to raise for the community is, is it any different in the cyber hallways? I mean, I think, I'm going to archive and write one day about last week. I mean, I think I'm an archive and write one day about last week. But I would ask anybody in those communities in those comments, is anybody proud of that? And if you think for a second as an adult, when you post those things, that students aren't seeing that and mimicking that. You're kidding yourself. You're giving your children permission to learn how to be disrespectful online. And over and over again, we see how students get in trouble for that in their adult lives. We don't want someone looking back someday when they're going for a job, someone's social media history. And and they said something that was sexual or profane or um, or racist. Rich Wastaki, who was trying to help us last week, kids started being inappropriate to him. Um, he hadn't experienced that in his career before, right? And so, you know, I think we're gonna have to be developing for our social media feeds some community guidelines. And I want to bring those to you because I just think in these, uh, we we're not the governors of Facebook or Twitter or anything, but on our feeds. Right? I I think we probably have to have the same kind of rules that we have in the in the cyber hallways, so we we still have a place called school, right? Um, and I just really worry that behavior, anyone who thinks that that behavior doesn't leave the social media world and find it right in front of you or maybe your child here at school. I'm gonna tell you, you you really, you really ought to check yourself. So, you know, it's just not to not to sound like a school mom, but somebody has to be, right? It it it's, uh, my, our director of public relations used a great word last week, appalling. I I just think we're better than that as a community. I don't really care what other, you know, I went and al- also I went to my superintendent collaborative and a lot of people brought printed out comments and they were bad all over. But I just like to think that our community is a little bit better, you know, than 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 others, so. Anything else about weather? February is coming. It looks terrible. Up with people. Okay, calendars, oh yeah.
You get to do it all over again.
Oh, it's, yes. Thanks, uh, you know, I appreciate you and Avery, you collecting up, you know, feedback. Thanks so much. So calendar, um, this is a first reading and anyone who has, um, you know, anything on your mind a- about this. I I would like to take the board back to a practice, uh, but pre-pandemic, the the board approved two years in a row. And I think that's really good for families to and teachers to have a a set of expectations. What you're gonna see in these two calendars is. In inside of your folder, you have a paper copy that looks like this. That that there's a real mirror here of some things that we're trying to do. One is we're not trying on both of these calendars, not trying to start so early in August. Not trying to start so late, because if you start late in August, then it impacts the end of the semester. Which our staff and a lot of times our students, you should weigh in on this, have said they want the semester to end before winter break. Exams, grades, the whole thing. Some schools, as the calendar moves, are going past winter break. And our staff and our students have said that they really don't want to do that. A- another feature that you see um is where we're we're putting school improvement days, parent teacher conferences. Trying to place those strategically, also strategically for families. This gives families a little bit of a fall break. Keeping the non-attendance day before Thanksgiving. But one thing that's been really kicked around that I could use support feedback and student feedback as well is if you look right here over the next two years, this is pretty early to get out, the nineteenth. And we've had some suggestions to go Wednesday to Wednesday for winter break. Our feeder districts don't line up that way. They don't go Wednesday, Wednesday. Some eh that I've, you know, we've worked with department chairs, our union leaders, our own uh leadership team, kind of a small committee. They said, well, if you go Wednesday to Wednesday, we'll just have final exams on those days. Because one of the things that you're seeing when we start in August and we end right before break is if you'll notice, there's a real imbalance over the next two years between the first semester and the second semester. That's kind of a cost of of ending hard before winter break and not being so early in in August. I don't know if anyone has a strong opinion about that, but in these two calendars, we've kept it two weeks, not Wednesday to Wednesday. Then, you know, finally, uh, kind of, if you wonder why we have this institute day on in every time in February, we align ourselves. DuPage County has an incredible institute day and most of our staff go to it. It's it's outstanding. Uh, the whole county um has activities, pretty amazing. We've kept Kazimir Plasky Day. Uh, we think that's a good placement. It's a three-day uh weekend holiday. I want to back up. We aligned, and this was true with our feeder districts too, we've aligned for the next two years where the Easter holiday happens to fall, uh, our spring break. And then kind of both of these calendars, you end um twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, um, right around there. Uh, I I want to honor the question about Eid that um. I'm sorry, I can't remember if Mira or Avery raised that. Apologies. Um, we put it on these two calendars the next year just so you could pay attention to it. Now, we have many students who are out for that day. We don't have good data over the past two years for two reasons. One, last year was on state testing and only our juniors were here. So we didn't get a good sample size. Everybody else was off that day. This year Eid falls on a Saturday, so we're not gonna get good attendance data. What the board could do is is um Eid moves, so in in this calendar, it'd be on the twentieth. I believe in twenty twenty-seven, it would be on the tenth or on the ninth. You could take this student school improvement day and start following Eid. So this is twenty twenty-six. If I open up the twenty twenty-seven calendar, I believe it's on this Tuesday. It'll eventually end up in February. It'll eventually move to January, December, November, into the summer months, right? You could take a school improvement day and have it and follow Eid. So I just want to open that up for some some conversation. One thing that that all board members should know is, one reason you can be excused from school is for religious observance. So that's a total excuse. All work can be made up. I don't know if there's a strong opinion, how how folks feel about it.
I I would say that if you if you can adjust the school improvement day to align with that. I'm sure that many families would probably appreciate two, three-day weekends as opposed to one, four-day weekend. Um, and then a potential for students to miss out again on in-person learning. Celebrating an important, you know, cultural holiday uh for their families for sure. But if there isn't an opportunity to align those things, then I would say that that makes all the sense in the world.
Right, one, you know, in in that case, this is twenty twenty-seven. So you would, you know, Eid falls on that Tuesday. So if you put a school improvement day, now sometimes instructionally that's difficult, whereas if you put it on a Tuesday, you have a day off. Oftentimes on the eighth, the attendance is very bad. So it's.
Just a a question. I don't know how serious Kazimir Plasky Day is. But if you went to school on Kazimir Plasky Day, could you shift? It's not really a holiday, so that makes it difficult, but could you put? Is there a way to combine that Monday and the Tuesday with whether it's school improvement days or a in the business world be a floating holiday to a degree?
Right, we we probably, yeah, our difficulty like in twenty twenty-seven here is Eid is fixed. Kazimir Plasky Day, we're not required by the state's.
Some it, some years it can fall on a Wednesday.
You know, and what I'm would ask the board is, you know, I would say once, once you start that practice. You 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 you've stepped to it. You've you you've made a commitment, right? You know, and it's gonna be something that you're gonna do um moving forward. We could certainly come back to you and play with that. Because over the next month, you won't approve this till February twenty-fourth. I could send you drafts and your updates, so you can just look over different scenarios. Yeah, Avery.
Do you think it would be beneficial to have students that actually um like participate in the religious holiday to come in and speak about like what it does for their school day like?
Mike off, um, Aleem came in one time and did talk to us about, you know, how they celebrate and things like that and what the purpose of it is too.
And you'll have students at superintendent advisory council on Wednesday who, you know, would observe this, this family and cultural and religious holiday as well. So, you know, that's that's one way. The difficulty, you know, as a school district, how many people does this really impact? We're, you know, we're just not gonna go around and say, okay, you know, who's Episcopalian, who's Protestant, who's Catholic, Muslims, you know? We just, we, you know, we don't do that. We can't legally do that. So it gets a little difficult, especially without the attendance information in the past two years.
For sure. I first wanted to comment on on the concept of when winter break fell, especially in that first calendar that you showed us. Personally, as a student, I really appreciate how winter break falls, um, just getting out early especially. Um, finals are a stressful time. We all know it. We've lived it. Um, and I think it's nice to have just those couple of days um before the Christmas holiday, if you do celebrate. To decompress from the school year, decompress from finals, and then you can actually enjoy your winter break. It's hard coming right off of finals to like, just like, okay, let's be cheery and celebrate. So I appreciate those extra days as a buffer and even for kids that travel during that winter break time period allows a little bit of easier time for families in that sense. To have a couple of days before a holiday beforehand, just like we do um for Easter, observing that Good Friday holiday as well. And then I would say for Eid, I think it is a good idea, just in the sense of Doc McBride, like you were saying earlier, we are in the business of kids. And I think that if we have a large enough population that there are kids coming to us in the superintendent advisory council asking for this. Then it's something that the board should consider and we should value them and their beliefs and the things that they practice and if it would be better for them ed- educationally wise and instructionally wise to have that school day off. Especially if we were going to have that school day off anyways, just at a different date, then it's definitely something that could be important to consider.
And the school improvement day is a workday for staff, but not an attendance day for for students. So that can float. There's no regulation of where we put that. So that's why that would trail that that holiday, so.
I would, similar to the weather days, aligning with our feeder districts is I'm sure for anybody that has kids at multiple locations, an important component because people plan vacations. And ultimately, if they don't align, you end up with kids being pulled for multiple days or a single day to join the kid who got out earlier than the other one. I know that, you know, in the past. You you hear families saying, well, you know, I'm gonna pull my kid two days early because my younger son, his break starts here and we planned a trip to Florida, Timbuktu, Australia, wherever it is. That makes it makes it difficult. So if there is an alignment, that is possible. I think that's best.
Both of these calendars oh uh align roughly the start of school. Winter break, spring break, and roughly the end. So they're all, spring break and and winter break are exactly aligned right now with all seven feeder districts.
Do we have any feedback yet on Eid with our feeder districts? Do we know what they do?
I our feeder districts are not inclined to 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 look at it. Probably the the district that's looking at the most is Homer thirty-three C. But when I had this conversation with our feeder districts, they're not, they're not considering it. I don't think they're so concerned with us because our institute days and our school improvement days don't align to theirs anyway. But that's also why it's beneficial to do like a two-year calendar. So parents can see out into the future what what days are in session and what days are not. That helps when there's, you can predict that. There's a predictability about that. You can manage your life a little bit easier if you have teenagers and, you know, younger kids. All right, that's my, that's my superintendent report. You know, you'll be, all of you seeing more and more of this. We'll be talking about it. I'm talking to the staff this week about it as well, so we'll superintendent's advisory council. So, you know, if you have an opinion, we're not done until, you know, you take a vote on it.
All right, thank you.
Oh, I have a couple more questions about.
Oh, yeah. Oh, sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. The um, so uh the number of days that you have to uh listed for being in school, session in, school in session. There are both a hundred and seventy-six for both calendars. Is that typical? Is that where?
Yeah, that's state school codes. We have to have minimum a hundred and seventy-six days of instruction and maximum four institute days for a one eighty.
Okay, and then um on the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven calendar. You didn't have the final schedule and I don't think you had. Oh, what was the other one? But you didn't have the finals scheduled posted on the twenty twenty-seven calendar that I saw earlier.
Yeah, we would just put it here seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. Yeah, we could just, just make a note of that. Just put putting down that these are when finals would occur. Right?
And then um, when, and I think also there might have been something with um when seniors are released. Cause they're released earlier than the rest of the students.
Yeah, we don't, on on this calendar, we don't, but we, for some reason, they had it on the twenty-seventh. Um, so I probably have to talk to Dr. Johnson on the twenty-sixth. When would be the last day for seniors? It it would typically be the twenty-second here and then the next year would be the twenty-first. So we can get that on the actual calendar.
Okay, and then my last question is probably just because I, this is my first go at the calendar. So as a parent, you know, I I get it in April and I'm already kind of putting to my thing. So like dates for events, like, you know, the big ones, so like homecoming and twerp and prom and graduation. Are those something that gets populated at this level or no?
Yeah, um, we we just didn't present it to you, but we do have a sort of at-a-glance page. That is on the website, you know, that if you just look at our calendars. There it is. So if you just take a look at it, those are all the, like, we do a key dates, so parents know them. So that that comes in on the website, yep. You're welcome.
Uh, a quick question, just feeding off a lance on the floating holiday thing that businesses do. Is that S I P student non-attendance day? Is that a fixed?
It's not. You can, you can move it around when when you would like to have it. That's why I could accommodate Eid, that there's no you know, you don't have to have it on any specific day.
Cause there's one in October and then there's the student improvement days later in second semester, right?
Yeah, we usually try to abut those like to a weekend, you know, so families have a longer weekend, students have a longer weekend. If you follow Eid with the school improvement day, you wouldn't be able to do that with that school improvement day. Cause it would constantly change year to year.
Got it. S I P, so it should have been S I D.
Right.
Got it, okay.
All right, thank you. All right. All right, moving on to our information reports, curriculum report. Are there any questions to that? All right, and you have your principal attendance and discipline reports from Dr. Johnson and Dr. Green.
Uh, Dr. Green is ill. Dr. Johnson, you wanna highlight anything? Um, just so you know, on the curriculum report, the ALOP program, I believe. Dr. Huntington, you have a meeting tomorrow with the regional office of education just to update how that that program is going. That's through the regional office of education. Dr. Johnson.
All right, thank you. So I know you all have received our report on just kind of like all the cool things that our students are doing um with athletics. And so that's the first thing I'll just note is that we're we're doing really well um with our various sports and are we're excited for, you know, dance and cheer. Um, they're coming up with their sectional and then also state for our dance team. And so, you know, that's just some of the um, sport highlights. Something else that I wanted to just say is at our institute day, our teachers did an amazing job presenting um how they're incorporating the common academic language in the classroom. And so I wanted to make sure that um you all knew that. Um, we also, you know, um, had the hiccup with the A C T, but I will say our students were phenomenal. Um, our juniors came so early. They were very prepared. The staff who were proctoring were very um quick to let us know, like, hey, something's wrong here. And so you know, they collaborated with us and we were able to understand what the students were experiencing. And so I think it's important to note that our staff and our students were amazing that day and we're excited to try again in February um in preparation for the real A C T. Um, that's coming up in April, but then also finally, um, we had a chili cook-off last week for the first time at East Campus, which I have to uh, recognize Estella Rodriguez, who is one of our math teachers who won our chili cook-off.
I'm very suspicious she's possibly related to the school board president.
And I will say, she put corn in her chili and like I do, and I'm like, yes, it's really good. But that's just a couple of things that are kind of happening right now. You know, our students are, you know, preparing for A C T. Um, but that's just a couple of things that are kind of happening right now, you know, our students are, you know, preparing for A C T, so is our staff. Um, and we're really trying to do some culture and climate, um, things, you know, within the school until we have some fun things coming up in February that I'll be sharing. Um, how that turns out, you know, there may be a school-wide rock, paper, scissors tournament happening. So, you know, just a couple of things that are happening. Thank you.
Dr. Johnson, I noticed in your, um, report that, that in girls wrestling, someone was the first in, in Lockport history to have a hundred wins. Are, are we familiar with that individual in any way?
Uh, yes, I think Ms. Avery Colella is our, um, you know, she's amazing, of course, just we want to, of course, recognize you again, just for, um, winning so much, they always talk about, what supporter, a winner. Um, and Avery definitely is a winner and, you know, we're just excited for all of, um, you know, just your wins and the, you know, you competing. Representing Lockport Township High School.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Anything else for me?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there you see your overnight field trips, which we have six of them.
Yeah, right, these are just, you know, informing you of all the different things that people are going to, from some wrestling to um, you know, we sent people to, um, all sorts of music, January is, is definitely a music month. Just wanna let the board, uh, know that, that people are traveling, right, and representing us all over the place, so.
Okay, well, thank you. All right, and then you have the maintenance report from?
Right, we have the maintenance report and just, you know, take any questions, um, you know, just, things never calm down here. Uh, all, always going, uh, we might have a different style for Mr. Ammer next year, but, um, you know, this just really ki- kinda shows you all the things that we're still doing and what we're, we're still getting done from simple things like replacing flooring and carpeting and more secure doors at the district office to, um, we did a redo of the math office at the East Campus, it looks great, to, um, I was present when our Kuboto, uh, mower and snow blower had its final moment. Literally, I was there, it happened right in front of me, um, it was done. Uh, so the driveshaft broke and there's a nice stain to, on the concrete to, to, um, demonstrate that. Any questions? And we'll a little bit ver- ver- further get into the memorandum of understanding, Neil Offerman's here from Burgling Construction.
Did we have any, um, issues in the buildings with the cold days?
We didn't.
Pipes versing up?
No, nothing like that, we had, we had some, some, some elements that were running continuously that were overheating. You know, we had redirected things, but no major mechanical failures, just really the, the kind of garden variety things that our maintenance people chase anyway.
All right, well, thank you. All right, moving on to our consent agenda items, from number two to number nine, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, number two to number nine?
Second?
All right, it's been moved by Ms. Johnson and second by Mr. Thies. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, we have an action consideration, do I have a motion to approve the memorandum?
If you don't, with your permission, uh, and with Neil here, maybe before ki- kinda doing that. You know, we, we have a lot, the, the, you, you are into construction season. And if, if it's okay with you, maybe just prefacing some of this and nee- taking advantage of Neil being here, if you have any questions about, about the work, uh, if, if you don't mind, just, you know, if I share a few things. You know, and, and several board members you might have seen this afternoon, I have paper copies if you need, um, the questions that I answered, if anybody needs that. You know, Kathy can help me distribute that. So one, just kinda going back to the root of, of this, you know, you passed a resolution on May twentieth uh, directing us to continue necessary, the, the absolutely most necessary work, um, uh, on central. Reason why I'm mentioning that, there's quite a bit of Facebook activity, uh, today, we do follow that, and this has been something that we made the, the community well aware of for, for quite some time. You know, I saw some people post that this is the board not respecting the results of the referendum, I think this is the board being good stewards of a facility you have and really doing the minimum type of repairs that are absolutely necessary. These are not, you know, grandiose, you're not building an atrium, you're not, um, you know, building, remodeling new spaces. Um, bumping out, adding an addition onto central or, or here at East, these are some core things that I think anybody who owns a home would be concerned about their roof, about their exterior envelope and about, um, you know, their electrical supply, right? You know, so just responding to some of those things that, that I saw online. Um, I would argue, and I will still argue, much like I did three years ago, um, without board action on that facility or parts of this facility, but especially on that facility. I will guarantee you, you don't put a new roof on, since nineteen eighty, we haven't, I've been up on that roof. You will be at Lincoln Way North again, and you currently have five million dollars worth of ceilings underneath that roof. And I, I just think you should protect that asset. Um, and if human beings are gonna be in there, a proper roof is critical to, to any kind of building. Um, so I just think that's important. So this journey has been a journey you directed us, twenty-six point two million in life safety bonds, ten to twelve million and potentially, um, uh, uh, fund balances. Um, so it's a little bit of, um, you know, what we did, this is actually an update. And we updated this over the weekend, we're meeting almost every other Friday with Burgling. Uh, this is an updated, um, bill, uh, and I want to make sure I clicked on the right one, too. I believe, no, this is the update, sorry. I uploaded this because obviously we'd never discussed something at the board table that we didn't put in, in, you know, out and available to the public. Uh, after we had our meeting on, um, Friday and we took a look at some of the, uh, numbers that Burgling had drawn up for us, and again, this is Neil and his team doing an estimate. Who will actually decide the cost are bidders. Um, we had some conversation and a really typical thing in the construction process is some good give and take. And asking, you know, our construction managers, hey, can you go back with a finer pencil, there's some things that we're, we're confused about. Neil and his team got us early this morning, this revised, um, estimate, so I think that's the important thing. Um, so just wanna pause for a second, what you're seeing here are a couple important things, you know, it's multi-page. And if you really wanna get into details, but the overall, you know, above here are the type of work that we're gonna do. And then, after you have the construction, these actual construction costs, here are some of the, what sometimes people say the soft cost. You know, things like contingencies, those, both those contingencies are potential overruns. Construction manager has a fee for doing this, this kind of estimating and coordinating general conditions. Um, so just wanna pause, Neil's here tonight, if there's any questions about this, this is also an important document for a couple of reasons. One, it sets in motion for Stephanie work to do life safety bonds. We need an estimate to present, uh, financially to say this is in general what we think we might do, a life safety bond issue. Cause one, it, it has to align with what the state has approved. And we also have to have an estimate, you know, we can't, we can't go to someone who's gonna issue bonds and say we need eight million dollars just cause we said so. Right? Um, so I wanna make sure if you have any questions, especially with Neil here, about this, the estimate that they're making for this work, or about the work itself.
I know that there were, yeah, I know that there was an attachment to this that showed kind of the scope piece, just the graphic, and I think that that would be helpful
Yeah.
for the, uh, general public to just kinda see that, um, to understand kind of what is being accomplished and where, uh, on the building.
So, one of the things that I think is important is, what, what you're looking at, the yellow areas are, um, the roof that we're gonna attack. Uh, after we, you know, we, we, we first said we're gonna take the whole roof off, we're gonna do the, redo the entire electrical supply, we're gonna work on tuck pointing the entire exterior envelope. As we worked with Burgling and chime in anytime, you know, Neil, please, you know, you're, you're here, you're a great resource, or come on up, uh, feel comfortable. That felt like we were, um, biting off more than we could chew. Uh, so, you might recognize that area of the building. Right? Below that, you as a board have all brand new ceilings. Literally, that entire area, you have five million dollars worth of ceilings. And we just feel that you want to, that roof has not been touched and removed since nineteen eighty. And to protect that asset and to protect the integrity of the building, you know, we're placing that first section of roof in its entirety first. Also, with electric, we decided that trying to do the whole system could, could set us up for, you know, potential, things can go wrong, right? You know, Mr. Rody's here, I know he knows a lot about electric. Um, so we're looking at doing one area with new electrical supply to see how those new components might function in this building. And then finally, the entire exterior tuck pointing. We have a parapet right here, there's parapet work where the arrow is. That's, that's some pretty heavy-duty masonry work right here that needs to be done, and then the entire tuck pointing, the entire building as well. So those, those three parts.
Yeah, just one question for Neil.
Yeah.
For the roof that is existing that we're gonna, uh, remove, what's the typical lifespan for the roof that's on it?
The brand-new one, you mean?
No, the, uh, the one that is currently, what would it typically last? Obviously, if it's been in place for forty-four years, I have to imagine that there isn't a roof out there that
Yeah, depending on
be out there for forty-four years.
Depending on weather conditions, right, so it's hard to, it's hard to gauge exactly
Sure.
what kind of abuse a roof takes, uh, every year, but, uh, you're gonna get a twenty-year warranty, we kinda explained that before. So that's your general basis of when that warranty ends, it's kind of the idea of, okay, you know, your lifespan is at a time where something could happen, where you need repairs. Granted, you'd expect for it to last longer than that, right?
Yeah.
Um, so generally, uh, somewhere between that twenty or thirty-year range is probably where I would you know, professionally say, again, I'm not a, a roofer, I'm a general contractor, but, um, anytime that warranty ends is when you get that risk period, right? And that's how much risk do you wanna take on then? Uh, depending on, you know, when it, the warranty just ends, you know, do you feel comfortable? Probably for a little bit, right? But then there's a time when you start seeing, uh, signs of wear and tear, uh, depending on, on what that might be, whether that be leaks or punctures, that you're gonna, um, it's gonna degrade the rest of it then, right? Once you get water inside and insulation gets a little wet, it's gonna kinda spread a little bit. As well as you have metal decking, which if that gets wet, that'll start corroding and rusting, and then if that continues to go on then that's actually gonna fall apart and, you know, with structural integrity of your roof, so. Um, I can't give you a timeframe on how, on how that happens, uh, I know we repaired some of the, the corroded roof, uh, that we've witnessed that we were there last summer, so it, it's evident that it has happened there. So, um, professionally, I, I agree with Dr. McBride that there, there's a time that this roof needs to be replaced. And the main thing maybe to bring up too is when we talk about roofing, typically when you say we're doing a roof on a, on a project, you're taking off the insulation and then the up, the top layer. Uh, the sheet, we would be taking off the decking and the wood sheeting, um, the existing wood decking on the project because we feel, based on what we saw over the summer, that there is some, some corroded, uh, items that need to be replaced. And, um, again, there could be some risk with leaving that, if it's unchecked.
I think there were some pretty solid pictures last year, wasn't there by D L A of a lot of that damage up there?
There was, I don't know, um, I took some of those, um, and I just don't have them loaded up. But it was, you know, it's wear and tear, you know, like we said, nineteen eighty is the last time that there was an extensive removal. Um, you know, so it's our belief that the patching and, doesn't mean that the roof hasn't been tou- touched, but it's been repair, 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 repair. Any, any question about, you know, where, where we're at here with just the, the, the scope of the project?
I had two quick ones for you, it looked like the architect fees excluded, which is expected, you're not an architect.
Yeah, correct, um.
Any other major exclusions other than that?
Um, no, I, 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 in terms of what we're gonna be putting to bid for bid packages, this should all be encompassing, and that's kinda why part of the revision that was today is that we're trying to put allowances in to cover things that are coming in the unknown. Right now, this is purely based off of an estimate based off of schematic design that we have, uh, in conversations with D L A. Um, they're obviously working on those, those actual drawings now, so when we get those available, um, towards the end of the month of February, then we're gonna update our estimate to, to the exact specifications of the drawings. But in terms of exclusions, uh, no, we're trying to cover the project as, as heavily as we can in terms of hard costs. Whether that be detailing on the drawings or an allowance we're putting in the bid package to, to kinda be ready for, uh, the unknown.
Yeah, and as a resident last, last year, I was really impressed with the timeline of construction and being ready for school opening. I thought that was really smooth, went really well. I see a June to August timeframe for this work, is it, is there a similar level of confidence that school opening won't be impeded at the, at the back end of that?
Yeah, so the one thing I, I, I will acknowledge is one, that, um, there's always the unknown. Uh, that was the part of why I think Lockport had us come on as a C M, just to be able to work with D L A and Lockport team and to kind of as, as Dr. McBride mentioned, you know, don't bite off too much more than we can chew in one summer because we wanna make sure the students are back uh, in, in session here, right? Uh, I think that would be a detrimental, uh, loss to all of a sudden try to do this remediation work and find out that we, you know, can't get it all done, so. The meetings we've had the past few weeks have been alluding to the scope of work, as well as um, ensuring the amount of work is achievable, uh, in that timeframe. So, we've reviewed, uh, specifically with our, uh, masonry slash restoration division, uh, the amount of lintels and masonry work that could be done in a summer, they feel confident in what we've, what we've told D L A. As well as the roofing, we're doing about thirty thousand square foot of roof. In any given summer, you probably should be able to get seventy to eighty thousand square foot, but since we're doing that roof deck replacement as well, we're gonna have to temp it in each night so we don't get water hitting that new five million dollar ceiling that we just put in. So that's, that's, that's kind of the blog down, this, we went a little conservative approach because we knew it'd be, uh, a slower roof replacement than a normal roof job. So, yes, it's been taken into consideration and we feel confident in the scope of work that we talked to D L A to date.
Great, thank you.
And, and actually, that kinda pivots, you know. This action item is actually on the memorandum of understanding from D L A and I had conversations with several board, board members. This is a model, construction manager, architect, um, owner, us, uh, you, um, that, that your, you know, law firm, Robin Schwartz, really recommends that you use when you're getting into construction of any, any, any type. Um, so you're right on, Mr. Patton, that Burgling's fee is different than D L A's fee. And the conversation I had with a few board members tonight is, is about D L A's fee. Which, uh, in that memorandum of understanding, uh, we have an agreement called an A I, um, both with Burgling and with, um, D L A. Customarily in Illinois, um, the percent as a fee for architects on the total construction, which is that top number? So about roughly six million, six point two million, is a range of seven to twelve percent. D L A has typically used nine percent. And I had a conversation with a few board members, maybe kind of illuminate that, that raised a question in the mind of a few board members, that's, that's the percent that we've been using prior to having a construction manager. And so there were some questions raised, and I don't know if some of the board members that I spoke to wanna kinda, kinda chime in on that this evening.
Yeah, I, I guess I was obviously one of them. I just want more information and backup for that, because, you know, if we're using nine percent for design efforts without a construction manager, if you look in that M O U, there are some scope items that are removed from their typical services. And I would say that that would modify that percentage some, but I could be missing something, I mean, there, there could be a, a solid reason for it. Um, I just need some more information, um, on that, so, you know, I would, you know, offer to the board that in order to get that and still meet our, our timeline that we need to hit so that we can accommodate some of those, um, bid timelines and other things and get construction started. If people would be open to tabling this, and in order to stay on track, we, we might need a special meeting to approve it. Hopefully, it could be a short special meeting, um, in order to do that, but I just, I need more comfort level in understanding what is behind that nine percent and what is maybe consistent with past practices and maybe what might be different with this one.
And this is the part I think that Mr. Thies is talking about, where D L A indicated what it's no longer doing that it previously did. And what it is doing that it will continue to do. So the question was, you know, we've So the question was, you know, we've generally used nine percent right in the middle. Excuse me, between seven and twelve percent. So, you know, in, in speaking either online or, you know, in conversation with a number of you. You know, similar, I'd, I'd like to get more information to know, you know, is that nine percent, if DLA is not doing some of this work. Um. Help me understand, I think what you're saying is where that nine percent is coming from. And certainly if the board said, you know, okay, let, let's table that, let's get that information. As Lance said, what it probably would entail is we'd need at least four of you to stay on track. Our, our goal is March seventeenth to have bids in front of you that you could approve for this work, so we could, you know. Start that phase of getting that work done so that we open on time. Probably take just a special board meeting where we, myself, Bill Thompson, we gather that information for you very detailed. You know, what, you know, that we can share with you about what exactly, you know, would justify that nine percent. Right? Which is customarily what we used in the past. Now we have a new relationship. So just, I'd open it up to you to decide whether you wanna, you know, uh, Mr. Tease is saying, you know, table it, go that direction. Or, uh, and get more information for you, um.
So, if we do do that, what is, how does that, um. Affect the timeline for getting bids out and getting them back and then getting them to present?
Uh, probably a question for DLA in terms of how they can remediate if they, if they got put on hold of. What, what their schedule would be like to get their drawings. Right now, they're telling me, uh, based on the current discussions, is that they can get me roof drawings by February twenty first. Which would be able to get me, you know, go out to bid, public, um, vet them out, and then get you guys information to March seventeenth. And the main thing, it's kind of a gray area that, is that we wanna order the roof materials before all the summer, other summer jobs kind of get in the queue. That's, that's the little bit of risk we're trying to avoid is get our ordering as early as possible, so we get materials.
So, February twenty first is kind of, would be a benchmark to work towards, to give you some finalization, right?
Yeah, essentially, that's the latest date I can accept drawings from him and kind of promise you guys, um, the bid reviews and a, a, a. Competent bidder on your March seventeenth.
And how long, so you're. If March twenty first and then you're turning around with March seventeenth, typically your bid process going out to bid and getting stuff back is about what, three in?
It's, we're, we're gonna give bidders two weeks, but we're gonna need two or three days once we get the drawings to make sure. Yeah, so we're putting our bid packages together, which is essentially the specs and the kind of instructions for the bid.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm gonna have that done before the drawings are done, but I need to make sure I don't miss anything in the latest and greatest drawing, so. I'll need a couple of days to review the, the drawings, put that in the bid packages, and then we give the bid, we'll give the bidders two weeks. And then we'll need between Burglin and DLA to sit down for a couple of days to vet them. Maybe even a scope review if we can, squeeze it in, and then come to the board on the seventeenth.
And, and DLA has already been working on this.
Yeah.
So it's not like, you know, they need this MOU, they're, they're not starting from scratch.
That was gonna be my question.
Right?
Yes.
So really, actually, I'd put that question back on board members. Um, I do think it's operative that, you know, the drawings go February twenty first, February twenty first, Burglin looks at them. They go out to bid, and the target is March seventeenth that you approve a successful bidder.
Right.
And so that really would be if you table it, I, you would just have, need to have four of you available, maybe even this week. To have a special board meeting. Um, you know, we would begin working tomorrow, getting you some more information. I've already talked to Eric Sickburg. Could he, could illuminate that? Board members just wanna know. You know, if you take nine percent and you apply it to about that six point two million dollars. Um, you know, mathematically, it's gonna come out, we, we were initially talking about seven hundred thousand. But I think it actually is gonna come out on that project more in the five something, but still, you're asking about that nine percent. And if we can give you more information, I think it's a good thing to do, only because you're starting this process. So it makes sense to measure twice and cut once. It's just really your availability. We would need four to have a quorum to approve it. And that might even be like Friday afternoon, right? You know, um.
Well, that was kind of my question, why I was like working the, the timeline backwards to see how quickly you can, folks can get a response back. To the boards, so that, and then thinking that we'd have to get that board and special board meeting up here pretty quick.
Yeah, I'd probably say you'd need it Friday or even, um, next Monday.
And if we did it Friday, we'd have to post the agenda by Wednesday?
Wednesday by noon.
Would DLA, would DLA have that information for us?
Yeah, I think if we sit down and we really detail for you, literally detail, more detailed than this memorandum of understanding. Exactly what is it that they're working on in terms of oversight, work with Burglin? Um, you know, work in terms of specifications, work that they've already done, who's working on it. So that you can kind of understand their fee structure, right? And I, I think it's a worthwhile endeavor for you, it's just like, you know, you're trying to understand how is Burglin working, how is your architect working? It's smart as you get into, into, um. Uh, you know, construction. What I wouldn't recommend, you know, it just depends on your calendars. If you say you can meet Friday afternoon or you can meet next Monday, I don't think that's a huge delay. Um, you know, but if it, if it goes beyond that, if board members are not available. Then, you know, it, it probably doesn't matter how quickly we get you information. We might, you know, might be more, or we might be well into February.
Yeah.
Right? Um.
Yeah, I, I guess what I would offer, this isn't a question about whether or not we would do a MOU. Or engage them to do the work, or, um, stop them from work that they are already doing. Um, it's more a matter of, to a degree, setting a template or an expectation for the level of detail that we would ask for going forward into the future. Um, and then also making us feel comfortable with the level of investment. Um, that we would be making in their services, um, to make sure that on behalf of our taxpayers. That we're getting the value that we, we need, so it's not something where. There's an intent to try and stop the production or stop the, the bid or, or anything like that. It's really just a matter of, as the fiduciary is to a degree of our taxpayer dollars, I wanna make sure that. Our public understands, uh, what's involved in it, um, and that we all, uh, feel comfortable with that investment as well.
Let's say, let's, um, what is the consensus? Can anyone make it on, on Friday?
Well, what you first have to do is make a motion.
Yeah, well, table it, yes.
And then vote.
Okay.
To table it. Um, and then how you construct your meeting, um. You know, probably what I would maybe ask is an opportunity to, you know, uh, regroup with DLA tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, see, you know, how they can, because I think what you're asking, let me make sure I understand what you're asking. This, this is the work that they're presenting to you.
Mm-hmm.
And I think what Mr. Tease is asking is he's, he's saying, oh, gosh, I see that. But on this project as presented, if the, if the, you know, we think that the, the, um, estimate's gonna be accurate. The, the DLA cost here is five hundred and fifty-eight, um, thousand dollars on, on that project. And I think Mr. Tease is saying, well, well, tell me more. I think you're saying that presentation isn't telling you enough.
Right.
If that makes sense. So to collect all the different pieces of that, I think we can get that done by Friday, certainly think we can get that done by Monday. Um, you know, so if you feel like you wanna table it, and you maybe, you know, if there's enough board members, you know, who are available. Uh, either Friday afternoon and we can get that done, have, um, you know, Eric Sickburg come and present to the board members there. Uh, or Monday, you know, I think Friday would be, you know, you might be a little bit tired. Be a little bit, we'd be moving along, I, you know, I think we could, we could do that.
Okay, why don't we do that? Why don't, I'll ma- make a motion here to table this, and then what we'll do is, um. Just get, talk to DLA and then make sure you can poll the board members and say what day would be good, either Friday or Monday.
And I might just poll you right now.
That's true.
Why'd you make your motion to vote on it?
All right, okay, all right. Do I have a motion to table the memorandum of understanding with DLA for roof replacement, masonry repairs, and electric work?
So moved.
Second, second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Tease and second by, um, Ms. Garrettson. That I heard, right?
Sure.
Sure, okay. Thought I heard your voice. All right, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Dorison?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Yes, all right.
And you don't have to vote, but, you know, if your calendars are available, you know, if you could just, just, just check. I would prefer Friday, you know, moving this along as quickly as possible. I think we can give you a full presentation of this by Friday, certainly. Um, you know, Friday at four o'clock or four thirty or five o'clock. Scoot on down to the film festival, right? You know, um, i- you know, and I'll, I'll check tomorrow, just if you get your calendars. Monday, I would say would be the latest. Um, for us to do this.
I'm not available on Friday afternoon. I could do Friday morning or Monday.
Okay.
Either of those are available.
Okay, great.
Am I available?
I'm available both days.
Okay.
Same.
And is anybody unavailable Friday morning? Dr. Shaw, you got a school to be at?
Uh, uh, yes.
Okay. If, if we had something in the morning, are there, are there board members that could attend?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, great, great, yeah, just, you know, I wanna get DLA's, you know, as, um, Neil said, like. DLA has the baton, right? Uh, right now, right now, you're waiting.
Yeah, very true, yep.
So great, thanks, thanks for, for your help.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say thank you for going back and looking at some of the, um. Possi- you know, going back and look at the estimate totals and, and reworking the numbers a bit, um. For where, on the second go around, I, I appreciate that.
Yeah, and just to be clear, we did discuss those numbers previously. So what I kind of alluded to earlier is that we are trying to put buckets of money to cover things unknowns that we, that may, may not make the design. We're trying to kind of foresee the future here, uh, and some of that stuff is what was down below the line where it needed to be up in the trades. So, actually, what you'll see is the trades is actually six point seven million on the updated one, but our numbers are to what we agreed on. Yeah, okay.
And, you know, I think this is good for all of you. I know that Mrs. Garrettson has built a home, right? Like, this is the construction process, right? You're working with your construction manager, asking about their estimates. You're working with your architect, asking about their fee, clarifying, just like you would if you were building a home, right? You would have lots of questions from the people doing the work, and what's the price, and is that really the price? When do we order these things? When can things get done? And boards get directly involved in that often time in a construction season.
You know, the, the three-week timeline is, I mean, it feels tight, I wouldn't, it didn't feel, feels pretty darn tight. Turnarounds, what, do you have any concerns about the quality of drawings that you'll get on the twenty first that we should know about before we meet with? DLA about the fee?
Uh, I can't speak to, you know, I've worked with DLA before and they've done fine work, so I can't speak to, you know, if I have concerns of quality. I think I feel good with the timeline, um. What I kind of reiterated to them, again, working backwards to, in order to get materials ordered and start June first, uh, I kind of laid out my ideal schedule. And kind of gave him as much time as I could, uh, and he went back to his team and kind of reviewed that with his team and confirmed that he was okay with it, so.
And the, the type of drawings you're getting on the twenty first, are those, it's not schematic?
They will be construction documents.
It will be construction, okay.
Yeah. Um, the good news is, is that we spent the summer there, working there already, so we, we have a good idea of what the scope of work already is. Um, I think part of that was trying to figure out how much we could chew and chew off in this, uh, summertime, so now that they have those answers. They're hopefully got pen to the paper.
And, and also DLA is not new to central, so they're not, they're not starting, you know, they're not waiting for you to give them a signal to start from scratch. Right? Okay.
And I guess that's the whole point, too, is why, again, why you hire us as a CM, is that, you know, a little bit of knowledge, and that's what we're trying to hopefully. Put our knowledge in this estimate, um, not only with the square foot costs and, um, the actual scope of work, but those, those buckets for what we think. Could happen or couldn't happen. I think the biggest thing to think about is when we rip that deck up, um, we're gonna be exposing your structure, so. We're, we're, um, anticipating there being some repairs, based on what we've seen, um, in our, you know, previous work, but. Don't think it'd be anything major. I think, I think something we can, we'll be able to handle. And again, Dr. McBride, you know, hit it again, you know, we're your CM agent for this project, so if you've got any questions on anything we submit or anything. In terms of schedule or what we're doing, we're more available to answer those questions.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And this will be, this will be an evolving, this estimate will be an evolving process until we get, you know, not only the bidders, but the final drawings, too.
Thanks, thanks Neil.
You're welcome, everybody.
Thank you. Hey, there's no policy updates. All right, do I have a motion to enter into closed session to confidentially discuss? One, student disciplinary cases under chapter five of the ILCS one twenty slash two C nine. And number two, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body. Including hearing testimony and a complaint launched against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. Under ILCS one twenty slash two C one.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Tease and second by Dr. Shaw. Roll call.
Dorison?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Yes, all right, and then at this point, we'll just have like a five-minute recess, okay, yes, five-minute recess, everyone.